Um, let's, let's just, let me go through the letter. So what's going on right now with the Sustainable Airport Master Plan is the airport has defined what they call near-term projects, which is, could be considered a portion of the SAMP, but it's not the entire SAMP. So when they say they're doing scoping for the Sustainable Airport Master Plan, that's not actually the case, and we have some issues with that. So the scoping process is, um, the port basically told us what their environmental review for growth at the airport is gonna look like. And there's a period of time under both federal and state law that allows the public to comment on, is that appropriate scope of work relative to environmental impacts? So it's, the window's open for a period of time for cities to, to comment. I want to walk through what our comments are. This letter will be sent to the, the port tomorrow. Tomorrow's the deadline for providing scoping comments. At the same time, up on the website tomorrow will be, um, a letter from the four cities, C-TAC, Burien, Normandy Park, and ourselves, from our SEPA officials, who have joined together with the consultants that we jointly hired, the four cities with VIX referring to, Councilman Pennington. And that will also be up on the website relative to comments that came from our SEPA officials. These are the comments of the city of Des Moines, and I just want to walk through these with you. So, I've highlighted the things that are of some, oops, concern to us, but it's the whole thing. And, um, these, the comments that we're making on the scoping, um, as we said, came from the Aviation Advisory Committee, the council, city staff, the public, from city SEPA officials. And our concern is that this Sustainable Airport Master Plan does not appropriately consider the context of development that has occurred and is occurring at the airport. And this kind of critical point, it relates to growth in the operational utilization of the third runway, to the overall growth trajectory the airport has experienced in the past seven years. Secondly, so, we're gonna talk about that, we're gonna talk about how the, that we believe that the process contradicts State Environmental Policy Act requirements, and third, that actions to provide appropriate environmental review of the SAMP have taken place outside the bounds of the State Environmental Policy Act. So if we look at the year-over-year growth here, we believe, you can see in 2012, we were at thirty-three point two million, 2017, we're at forty-six point nine million. Aircraft operations are about fifty percent increase, three hundred thousand to four hundred and sixteen thousand. Cargo, two-hundred eighty-three thousand metric tons to four hundred and twenty-five thousand ma- metric tons. And, so, we believe that the appropriate baseline, and they use the baseline as the, as the scope, as the sort of, they start there, and they say, well, what will be the impacts of additional growth? Okay? But we don't think it's appropriate to start at 2018. We think it's appropriate to start at 2012. And there are a couple of reasons for that. You can see, that's really when there started to be a, a very significant growth trajectory for the airport. At the same time, um, they, last time that they did a Part 150, which is a noise analysis, it was done in 2013, and the beginning of the SAMP was in 2012. So, um, we're concerned that this whole window of growth has never been captured relative to environmental impacts. And to start at 2018 is completely inappropriate, because it's an assumption that, gee, everything's okay up to now, and here's what we're gonna do in the future. Okay? So, we're, we, you know, gonna make the point. I have some, um, references within this, and I'll show them to you, but there was correspondence about a facility the airport was building last summer, uh, between the city and the airport management, that underscored our concern with facilities built outside the environmental review, review process of the SAMP. And that's essentially what we're saying is continuing to happen. So we're, we're, you know, that's a comment we're making relative to appropriate scoping. Um, the approach to the airport to identify near-term capital improvements, which essentially what they're calling this, is an incremental approach to developing the SAMP, provides a faulty context, ignoring the fact that capital investments going forward will in fact define future development patterns. So if you're saying we're only doing a portion of the SAMP, well, that, that may or may not be a legitimate claim, because what you're putting in the ground and the billions you're spending on capital improvements determine what the future's gonna look like, and the environmental review is supposed to be the entire picture. Um, so, the environmental review process is inadequate in the context of the SAMP as a whole, and this approach is inconsistent with current Washington State law and administrative code requirements. And that point will be made more extensively in the comments from our SEPA officials and consultants. As I said, the, the FAR, 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 the 150, Part 150 was done, um, in 2013, and that's a noise analysis, and, so how can we update for environmental impacts in 2018, having missed that window of time? SAMP planning was done and, began in 2012. So, our concern is that environmental review of projected growth does not consider impacts of growth to date. And that's the, sorry, that's the primary, oh boy. That's the primary consideration. Um, in that sense, is perhaps the most important one in there. Secondly, the operational utilization of the third runway, 16R, highly controversial chapter in the airport's history, has seen a trail of agreements that expand the use of the third runway. Okay? They were modified, the agreements were modified over time to increase capacity in third runway, and these modifications in providing expansion of operational capacity were done outside any environmental review. Okay? Developing a growth plan that continues to utilize the third runway in an expanded operational role does not adequately address increased environment, environmental impacts that have occurred over time. And these issues need to be addressed in the scoping process. We requested information from the FAA on their, um, tower standard operating procedures. Uh, we did that back in August. We've not received a response with the information. We thought that would have been helpful, uh, in, in our scoping comments, so we're disappointed we didn't receive that information. And then we've kind of gone through some of the basic conceptual issues we have with all this, but there are specific issues. And, I won't go through these in too much detail, other than, they're critical, and we've heard this over and over from the community. We're concerned with noise and health impacts of increased over, over flights. We're, we're concerned with noise and health impacts right now. And, you know, in terms of what are those, what are those impacts? We're concerned with fuel dumping. People have commented that they've seen planes dump fuel before they land. That's been denied by at least one airline, but we think that should be part of the scope. Um, fuel emissions, same things, impacts of fuel emissions, and there's, um, we'll talk also that there's a ultrafine particle study that we'll get to that's being done in here, needs to be incorporated into this. Transportation impacts, scoping needs to include now, increased traffic impacts, potential moti- multimodal solutions, and, um, increase, it will increase congestion and pollution from vehicular traffic, including truck transport. Siting of a second regional airport, scoping needs to include a review of options for growth at C-TAC, including options for siting a second regional airport, and we have a comment in there about Moses Lake, open and ready to do business. Next gen, something that Quiet Skies has pushed on a lot, in terms of potential impacts or, or, or current impacts, scoping needs to address the environmental, noise and health impacts of next-gen implementation. Glide path variations, 34R, we had it at a Highline Forum discussion yesterday, they told us that the current slope was at two-point-seven-five percent, the FAA standard is three percent, so why isn't that, um, addressed in terms of operational dynamics from the airport? And finally, concurrent studies, I think that was a point that Steve had made, that there's an ultrafine particle study being conducted by the University of Washington. I'm on the Technical Advisory Committee, I know that Steve and Sheila typically attend those meetings, Cheryl, I think you may also. And, uh, that's, that's looking at what, sort of, the, the, the very smaller bandwidth of particle emission, ultrafine particles, what are the impacts of those? Where do they distribute? And then the next part of this is the epidemiological, I did it, um, aspects in terms of health, what, what types of particles cause what type of health impacts. Puget Sound Regional Council is doing a study on regional aviation. We've encouraged them to look at siting of a second airport, and look at governance of what that could look like in the region. And finally, the budget proviso baseline study, which, um, we just addressed for Steve to be a part of that, currently underway, and that's being conducted by the Washington State Department of Commerce, with a lot of input from Representative Orwell especially, and Representative Pellicati. And so, we think that all three of those studies need to be, they're concurrent, they need to be included in the scoping and the environmental review, and, or else, what's the point of the information? So, um, we're extremely concerned, the lack of inclusion of any of these, of any of these items will not present a comprehensive picture as the environmental impacts of the airport. So, um, that's what we're sending, and I just want to show you a couple of the, um, we have information on fuel dumping, um, I can see, yeah, this was testimony of Mayor Pina, April 25th, 2017, to the Port of Seattle Commission. And, you can find this on the website tomorrow, but in this document, Mayor Pina runs out all of the considerations we currently have with this process and the SAMP in terms of impacts. And it was, uh, you know, enduring statement, let us say, but we've included that as part of the, the background for this, for this letter. Um, a couple of other things I want to show you in here, sorry, triple spaced. This was a letter from Lance Little, the Director of Aviation, July 26th, 2017. We had, um, objected to a assumption that a facility they were building on the airport would enable growth, at least future growth. And so, um, the Director sent back the following letter. "We recognize that growth-related projects at C-TAC must be evaluated, evaluated together in the Sustainable Airport Master Plan to assure that cumulative environmental impacts are addressed." And this is exactly what they're not doing. So, documentation from the, from the port itself. This is where we send a letter earlier of concern. I think there may be one other thing in here. This is information about how the, um, third runway conditions were changed over time, right? From December 6th, 2010, there was one set of rules about use of the third runway. And, as we come to July 26th, 2016, there's another, um, kind of issuance of a letter of agreement, in terms of the approach control, all of that with the, with the TRACON at the airport, that expands the use of the third runway. So, I think that's about it. Um, at any rate, we wanted to share that with the, with our residents and s- community, and, um, just kind of reemphasize our commitment to addressing impacts and not sitting idly by and accepting what we get. We need to stand up, this is part of the scoping. The next portion, and the reason we've got these great consultants, we're real excited about their national consultants, is we will engage in the environmental review itself, and we will comment on the environmental review. They have to do a draft environmental documents, and they have to do final environmental documents. And, there's a process of not only commenting, but of appealing over time, depending on the outcome of what, what they consider to be significant. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. Appreciate your time and attention, appreciate you guys being here. Thank you.
Before we move forward, um, Council, I would like your direction, I would like to, very much like to sign this letter. On top of that, I'm, I know, this letter is addressed to the appropriate place to have our voice heard, but I'm wondering, should we not CC it to the port commissioners? I am concerned that they may not necessarily see this. And so, I would like to not only move forward and sign this, but I would like to suggest that, yes, it goes to Steve Rybey in the beginning, uh, but at the same time, we should send copies to each of the port commissioners.
Sure.
I have one question now. Should it, if that's the, if that's the case, then it should also, in my opinion, go to the-
The new director?
Executive Director.
I would agree. Thank you for including that. Is Council comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Should I just sign this copy, or do you want to create another one with the CCs noted?
We'll create one.
Okay. All right. Great. I'll, we'll get that done. Thank you very much. Okay, now we will, uh, proceed with our, our normal agenda, and, and we'll take comments for the public. When I call your name, please come to the podium, uh, state your name and the city in which you live, and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you wish to speak on the public hearing, to consider draft ordinance 18-101 related to the landmark on the sound zoning reclassification, you will have an opportunity to do so later in the public hearing, because we want that to be part of the record of the public hearing. First person I have signed up is actually representing the Highline School District, is that correct? So, um, per, for our, our rules and, and policy, you'll have five minutes, not three.
All right, thank you, Mayor-
Scott, I'm sorry.
You ready? Thank you, Mayor Pina, Council members, city staff, and community here. I appreciate the opportunity to, to, uh, come and, and talk with you. Um, I probably don't have five minutes' worth of a speech here for you, but what I wanted to talk, in reading the agenda for tonight and talking about growth, whether we're looking at the airport, or we're looking at proposed, uh, pretty significant projects like the landmark, um, there's an, an opportunity to, that I would hope the Council would consider in looking at, uh, instituting construct, new construction impact fees that support education. Right now, we have, uh, agreements with unincorporated King County, which is the majority of the north end of our district for impact fees. We also have an agreement with Kent, with the city of Kent, for the portions of our district that, that lead into the, within the Kent city boundaries. There's, um, there's a significant amount of proposed growth, big projects that are happening, in, happening in the region. Um, this is an opportunity to, to lift some of the weight of the impacts of this new construction off of local residents, by providing an impact fee for new construction, so it actually comes from the contractors as they plan these, these large projects. Highline School District went through a, a, a long, flat time prior to, you know, in the early 2000s, 2010, and since then, in 2010 and since then, there's been three successful bonds, thanks a lot to a lot of community members that served on our capital facility advisory committee. Um, we have replaced a, a lot of aging schools. The first two bonds only replaced current buildings. The last bond actually has two new, has new construction coming into the district to address, um, the growth that happened within the district from 2010 till 2017. This year, we have had a slight drop back in enrollment. Um, it was anticipated, probably not to the number we, we hit this year. Our official count will be on October 1st, so this coming Monday, we'll be able to measure October 1st to October 1st, to determine what that, um, drop is. This year is probably about 700 students. The majority of the drop in students is on the north end of the district, and we attribute that to higher, um, cost of living in that area, and families are moving south. Our, our, uh, growth on this end of the district, we, we haven't lost students on this end of the district, and some of these projects that are going on have an opportunity, one, and I've seen a couple variations of landmarks, I'm not certain what's on the total list for tonight, but could have an opportunity with the residential development to create a population of one elementary school from one project. And, when, when these new people come into the district, the district doesn't have a, uh, there's not a magic tool that funnels money into the district to, to build new buildings. We end up putting portables out where we have new buildings, and then we're, we're, we're in a, in a bad light within the community, why didn't you plan far enough ahead? And, and we can plan as far ahead as we want, that doesn't give us the money to do what we need to do. This is an opportunity to, to not, uh, have, have all of this land on the backs of the local community through another bond. So, that's really my ask, is just for the opportunity to get this on the agenda, have good, uh, conversations about this. I put a one-pager out for each of you, it's on your desk, that shows the basics of the calculation formula, and I'm happy to send the, uh, the long-range capital facility plans each of your email inboxes. I didn't want to kill a whole tree for something that wasn't even on your agenda tonight. Um, and so, it really goes through, it, this is our five-year plan, which you guys do have on file here already, and every year, we update it based on current enrollment, based on, uh, projected enrollment or growth in the years to come. We're anticipated to be flat next school year, and then start going up again with enrollment.
Scott, you could take those documents, and if you provide them to Bonnie, our city clerk and communications director, she'll make sure that the Council gets all that. I would like to suggest to Council that, um, economic development has talked about this in the past, but it kind of stalled, um, that I would like to recommend that we remand it back to the committee to be addressed, and I have to yield to our Chair, Councilmember Nutting.
As the Chair of the Committee, I'd like to see it, um, put on our plan.
Deputy Mayor?
I agree.
Council? Okay, can we get this remanded to Committee for Conversation on the first possible opportunity? And we will be reaching out to you for input from the district as we, when we have these discussions.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. We've met with Denise Stifarm a while back-
Mm-hmm.
-to, to look at how to proceed, and then we just haven't proceeded, so it's certainly an opportunity to look at it again. Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next person signed up to speak is Mr. John Stewart.
Hi, uh, my name is John Stewart, I live in Seattle. I was at the last Council meeting, uh, talking about a particular red light camera in the city of Des Moines, uh, which actually was also the topic of a Seattle Times article several weeks ago. My, um, my contention was, and is, that, uh, this particular red light camera is totally illegitimate, in that it's only a big cash cow for the city of Des Moines, as well as the red light company, which I think is American Traffic Solutions. There was no response from the Council, um, last time, so I'd like to give the Council an opportunity to respond now.
Certifically, we don't respond to public comments from the DAAS. Um, if you would like the, uh, a response from the Council, the, we will work through the City Manager's office, and we will send it to you in writing.
Okay. Um, I guess I'll have to accept that. I would like to pose the specific questions of how much money the Des Moines, the city of Des Moines made from this one red light camera in the, the year of 2017, and also how much money the, um, uh, red light company, American Traffic Solutions, made from that one camera. Is that feasible, do you think?
Yes, absolutely. We'd be happy to provide that. If you contact, uh, myself, City Manager, um, or Bonnie Wilkins, our city clerk, and just submit your questions, we'll respond to those.
In writing?
Absolutely.
Yeah. How about next week, here?
In writing.
Sir, you're asking for a debate?
Yeah.
And I'm-
I'm asking for a response, other than-
Well, I, I'll, I'll tell you one thing right now. All of our traffic cameras went in with the, with public safety in mind. Any revenues that come in from them are earmarked and go into the budget, and they pay for public safety and traffic enhancements. There were studies done, they were put in the appropriate places in the city of highest demand, and that's it.
Study?
They have, they have-
The red light company?
They have been very effective, they do change behavior, and they also help to fund other traffic safety projects in the city. I am not going to debate, to debate with you at this time, sir. I told you, we do not engage from the DAAS. You asked for my indulgence, I gave it to you.
You're not gonna debate this with me now or ever, is that right?
There's no purpose in it. That is the last person who is asked to speak to the Council. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Council that did not get an opportunity to sign up? Seeing no one approach, that will take us forward into Board Committee reports and Councilmember comments, and we will start tonight with Councilmember Banks.
Thank you, Mayor. Lots of things going on. So, on the 19th, along with, uh, Councilmember Buxton and Mahoney, I attended the meet-year chief, uh, at Highline College. Along with the chief was Doug Jenkins, Tanya Seaberry, and Mike Graden, and it was an excellent presentation, a lot of engagement from the community that was, uh, attend, that had attended. And then I believe there was a Q and A afterwards, it lasted quite a while, didn't it, Chief? Which was really good. Also, um, as an aside, many of us attended our former Councilmember Melissa Musser's wedding on the, uh, nine, on the 21st, which was also the night of the, uh, art gala, which was well-attended at, um, down at the auditorium. On the 22nd, the farmer's market, I attended, and then this evening is Municipal Facilities Committee, of which our Chair, Councilmember Nutting, will comment on. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
All right. To kick off the night, we s- had the Municipal Facilities Committee meeting. Um, we were brought up to speed on the 2018 CIP projects. I guess the big takeaway is that, uh, finding contractors to bid on city projects, large or small, has been a challenge. Um, so we're bundling several together to try to make it, um, a more tasty bite at the apple, I guess. Um, and more to come on that. Um, the Marina has put in, um, or is going to, very shortly, um, apply for their permit for, uh, their dredging project that's every ten years, that they have to do. Um, it takes about a year to get the permit, um, so, getting in early so we can start dredging in, in 2020, um, so we can hit the, the fish window, um, between August and, um, February 15th, so we can get that taken care of, um, to allow for the boats that we have in and out of the Marina. And then, um, we were, uh, the city was approached by T-Mobile about some upgrades to some light poles, um, possibly a tower, um, and some lighting in the, uh, Stephen J. Underwood Park, and, um, basically, we're going to s- sit down at the table and see what they have to say about the project, and, um, take it from there. So the Committee will be briefed again, uh, as soon as that takes place. Uh, secondly, uh, the Economic Development Committee met, and we discussed, uh, um, business license code updates that basically the, um, AWC has proposed, um, well, has drafted these, uh, resolutions that cities are pretty much mandated to, um, put into code. Streamlining business applications throughout the state. Um, also, we talked about the Comprehensive Plan amendments, that'll be coming forward, basically bringing several, several properties that have already been, um, made into PUDs or the business park and stuff, and just bringing that into our code and cleaning up some code issues. Downtown improvements, uh, we talked about branding, um, the improvements, possibly, um, hanging baskets, just, just, uh, just a whole feel of when you come into the city of Des Moines and, and know that you're coming into a special place and leaving a special place, that you've been somewhere. And then, touched on the Big Catch Plaza, and, um, possibilities down there. Um, and, this weekend, uh, Saturday, is the Des Moines Police Foundation barbecue, fundraiser auction, and, uh, we sold out tickets, so if you didn't get your tickets, um, you're out of luck. Amazingly enough, we sold 150 tickets, um, so it's gonna be a well-attended event. Um, I'm going to be helping out with the food, um, barbecuing, um, my wife will be hanging out inside, taking care of things. So, thanks for everybody that bought tickets, and, um, glad I'll see you there.
That concludes my remarks. Thank you. Councilmember Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended, uh, over the last couple weeks, several events that, uh, my colleagues will mention, so, I'm gonna keep it to a cou- just a couple things that they might not, uh, this afternoon, we had a senior services advisory committee meeting, and, uh, our city manager and strategic, strategic officer, is that-
Chief Strategic Officer.
Chief Strateg- Susan Caesar. And, uh, anyway, they did a great job in facilitating a transitional meeting. There were a few new members, and, uh, just re- reintroducing the new members and going over a couple- just reintroducing the new members and going over a couple of the, our, what our municipal code reflects as responsibilities that committee, and just a review also of the way that our city has responded well to senior services and listened to some of their concerns and worked with our community transportation. Working on the building, we've taken some grant funding right now. If you go up there, there's actually work being done on the, on the building, so it was, it was a, they're, all the, the application of grants and how the money's been appropriated, so it's a good meeting. I thought it was handled well, and I appreciated being there. I always want to put a plug in for the park run. It's a good community, a good community event, nine AM every Saturday. The fire, then you can go to the farmer's market, and this Saturday is the last farmer's market of, opening of the summer. There's going to have, be some fun things down there for families. They have a lot of little events around, so mark it on your calendar. Hope to see you there. As far as update on the market, though, they're looking forward to doing some special fun things, having some more special events down there throughout the summer, next summer. So I'm looking forward to what Susie Novak has in her back pocket. Also, mark your calendars for November second. There's going to be a special holiday market down at the beach park. It'll be indoors. So, that's about all I have, except for one thing I would like to read. On August-
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I'm trying to interrupt. I'm looking at a calendar. November second is a Friday.
Oh, really? She said I didn't check, double-checked my, so it's-
It may be November third.
Maybe, it's probably, it's going to be a Saturday, so, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that correction. There'll probably be more information out in the public as it draws near. Okay, on August twenty-third, our council joined with other jurisdictions around the country in observing September as National Recovery Month. As a former mental health professional, twelve-step facilitator and sponsor, and supporter of hundreds of recovering women and children, for me, every month is National Recovery Month. I have a lifelong commitment to the recovery community, and my personal and professional decisions will always reflect that. In response, I live in complete abstinence of alcohol and street drugs with only caffeine remaining as my one drug of choice. This is a personal decision, and I make no negative judgments on partakers. I will join friends and colleagues at the bar, Blues and Brews, and the Wine Walk, but I'll be drinking ginger ale and giving away my tokens and wine, so you want to hang out with me. So, in honor of those who selflessly, courageously support the recovery community, thank you. In addition, I want to recognize a couple of agencies in our community who have had a tremendous impact on neighboring lives. Damascus Homes and Oxford House, which offer transitional services and clean and sober housing. Battlefield Addiction, which also offers transitional services, clean and sober housing, and you can support them by visiting their coffee house in Auburn. The Genesis Project, which is right over here on two oh eighth Impact Highway-ish. They offer safety and transitional services for women coming out of the life. God bless these places and all those who support the recovery community. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pennington?
Hey, went to the farmer's market, was nice, and, and I echo this Saturday show-up. It's, it's the last one. It's, I think it's been a good season down there for the first year of a tran-, you know, of a new team that, that is managing the market. So I think they've done a really, really great job at doing that. Went, attended emergency management training last Thursday. We, we learned a little bit more about the roles of elected officials during an emergency, and I'm sure we'll be having some more, more of that coming forward. Attended the finance and econ meeting tonight, and you heard that report already, so I won't expand on that, and thank you all for showing up tonight. It's nice to have a full house, so thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Mr. Steinmetz, it's good to see you. It's been a while. Glad to have you back. On a couple Saturdays ago, I dove the Marina around the pier, and we did a trash cleanup, and we, we got several hundred pounds of debris that had either been tossed aside. I, in fact, found a gun and a lot of cell phones. So, but it was a great, great effort by the Mass Center and the Washington School Alliance, two of the people that'll be major players in our new reef down at Redondo. And that was a great event. Thank you, Mayor, for coming down. It was meant a lot to them to have you come and, you know, say thank you. I attended the Destination Des Moines meeting, so as Art Wine Walk on October sixth, I gave you guys a poster. It's going to be the north end of town this time, so a lot of businesses that normally wouldn't be involved. So I invite everybody in the community to show up. It's a great time to meet the rest of the residents. They also asked us on October thirty-first Halloween to have a booth. I don't know if you guys know this, but about five thousand people show up in our downtown area for the trick-or-treat walk, and they would like the city council and even some of our city staff, if they prefer, to show up and hand out some candy. I was thinking maybe we could do something along those lines.
I'm absolutely in favor of it, for, and-
Three to seven.
If, if there is an opportunity, there's a location that I think is probably going to be underserved this, this year because it's under construction. So if there's a way to contact the folks at the theater and they would allow us to set a table up in a safe location, I will join you, and I think any other council members that can, that can, that have the time, that would be great. It's a, it's a fairly long time, but there's a lot of people, because we're there from three to seven?
It's from three to seven.
Yeah.
Primarily the earlier time. They, they all start earlier, but it's a great event, and like I said, it's a great way to meet, I'll say, a population or community that usually is busy with their children and not available to meet us in other circumstances, so.
And, and I will add that candy is not provided by the city. We would have to provide our own candy, which is to be expected. I will note that Costco just sent out a coupon book, and there's a lot of candy on sale, so, anyway. I'm sorry, please keep going.
And I think that's when we get together and we do Costco and, because we're going to need a lot of candy, trust me. On September nineteenth, I attended the Rotary Luncheon. I was asked to speak. It was a great honor. Had a, had a nice conversation with people. They actually let me go longer than normal. Like, you normally get twenty minutes, but nobody said anything that I went twenty-five. But I just want to acknowledge Rotary, because they're kind of a behind-the-scenes good do, do-gooder type of organization in our community. I think some of the others get a little bit more of the PR, but, but they continue to do great service to the community, and I don't want them to be forgotten about. Of course, meeting the police chief, as Councilmember Banks spoke about, and the incident command training that we attended. I just know to stay out of the way till I'm told different. Art Gala, of course. On, on Sunday, I attended the, an apple cider pressing at the Quarter Deck. It was an unofficial party that Ken Rogers and Catherine Carboni Rogers hosted. All I'm going to tell you guys, when that place opens, it is going to be a true treat. We had a beautiful day. We were drinking a few, a little bit of cider, and it's such a nice place to spend a couple hours in the afternoon. It will be well-received. Actually getting to stand up there and kind of get that feeling I'm excited about. I also met with a few veterans. We're planning a Veterans Day event for November eleventh. That's a Sunday. If anybody doesn't know, that's the hundredth anniversary of Armistice Day, where no, where Veterans Day was actually created based on that day. Very important day for us veterans and all those that have somebody that's served in our community. We're finalizing a venue. We'll get to that hopefully soon. The only other thing I'm working on is, I've been working with the city on a couple pieces of history. Bill Rudberg has offered one of the countertops that was in his grocery store. This is a single piece of wood, fourteen and a half feet long, an inch and a half thick, and two and a half feet wide of one cut of old-growth lumber that used to be in this area. I think whatever we decide to do with it, if we can get it, would be an awesome piece to, for that. The other piece is, there hap-, seems to be an opportunity for a mural of the Maury Island Incident that's currently in Burien, so stealing something from Burien that truly belongs to us, anyway. It's, it's a different form of art, but I think it could be a different piece, and I know that, I've reached out to Councilmember Banks, as a possibility of the Arts Commission, and I know city manager Mathias has pursued some interest in it as well, so continue to pursue those things, and that's what I have. Thank you.
I would like to suggest, before we move forward, with respect to those, the countertop and the mural, I believe the city has the means to do, to move, to, to evaluate and look at what we can do with that. It would, there is a, is there a form, I think? Okay, well, I was led to believe that there may be a form. If there's not, we should get that information, get it to the city. I, I suspect the Art Commission would be involved. And look at, you know, because if we, if we didn't have a place to put it when it instantly came in, we'd have to make sure we had appropriate places to store it and things like that, so. Want to make sure we work through that. I think it's very generous of people in the community to think of us when these things come about. They are, and so let's, let's try and move these things forward appropriately. And that takes us to Councilmember Back.
Just a short report. So last Thursday, I also attended the Incident Command for Emergency Management for elected officials, and I wanted to say thanks to George Delgado, our Director of Emergency Management, for putting that class together. It was a very informative three hours, so thank you, George. And then yesterday, I attended the SCORE admin board meeting, but I see that Michael has that on his administrative report for tonight, so I'll just defer to Michael on the SCORE update, and that concludes my remarks.
All right. Thank you very much. There aren't many things that the council hasn't covered, in that the emergency management training, again, I want to thank Chief, Director George Delgado for putting this thing together. Emergency management is something that most cities talk about but are not really prepared to address, and because it's not just us. We have to think about what we're going to do. We have to think about how to communicate to our citizens so they can better be prepared. I can tell you, three days is not going to cut it. I think as of what, as of recent, there are up to three weeks' worth of reserves in water, and, you know, we will be coming forward with more information on that. But also, our connections with surrounding cities to look at who has what and how would we work together to take this area out of, forward and back into a recovery mode should a major incident occur. The advantage of having this kind of presentation, or preparation, is that when things happen, you, there are motions, that, there, there's a command center that comes together, and it, I mean, some, some cities even activate their command center over a parade, because things can happen, so you're ready. There are inclement weather situations that are not catastrophic per se, but are paralyzing to a city. The command centers oftentimes go into operation, and that's how you deal with it. I'm really excited that we are moving forward with this. I want to thank Deputy Mayor Pennington for all his work in getting us to Emmitsburg in the beginning, and getting us the, the startings of the training. I want to, I again echo, George Delgado has been spectacular with this. Michael and his team take this all very seriously, so I can't say enough about that. I am delighted that the council participated, and I am looking forward to continuing our efforts and our education on that and our, our work with the community on that. Did you have some? Okay, sorry. Okay. There was the, the Arts Gala, but I have to say that it was, that was a, a great amount of fun, but it was a tough act to follow when former council member Musser chose to get married in these council chambers and, by our, by our Judge Leon, and so that made for a really great day. And I think rather than walk through other things that have been touched on, the one thing that I do want to share with council is, council put forward community recognition known as the Spirit of Des Moines. We have been trying to do it annually, but it can be difficult for us to get everything together with all the other things that, because the staff does help us put this together. So I've been talking with our city clerk and communications director Bonnie, and I would like to get the council to work on this. This is a community award, a series of community awards that do come from the council. So we are going to look at a modified way to get this done with council input, and we're going to do two years in one shot, because right now, we're about a year behind. So if we do the current year and the, and our, current year and next year? Same time? And, and, okay, so it'd be seventeen and eighteen, my mistake, and then get the awards out in the first quarter of next year, would be my intent. So I, we will need your help on people to nominate. We'll get the information to you, the categories and so forth. I will say that we have to present a little write-up. You can't just put a name on there. It's a write-up as to why, because those write-ups will be read when we, when we do finally have the ceremony and do the awards. There are citizens that have reached out to us in the past and said, you know, we could do this with a fundraiser and create an event and so forth, but we just haven't had the capacity to date to get those kind of wheels underneath it, and I don't want to try that right now when we're already a year behind. So, expect the email to come. Be thinking about its businesses, and then there is an annual award, and then there's lifetime achievement awards for individuals, so. I'll give you fair warning, and Bonnie will get you the email. Okay. At this time, counsel, we have built on the agenda, I'm, sorry? I'm sorry, I mean, this is going to take me back to admin report. I'm sorry, Michael. Please continue with your admin report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. So, following up on the emergency management training for council, on October eleventh, we'll have a comprehensive study session on emergency management. And as we said, we came, when we came back from Maryland, the institute last, about a year ago, actually, you know, we said that the critical piece for us was to expand our resources and make this part of our culture. So I think that we're moving in that direction. I think you'll appreciate the presentation we'll have at the study session, which will be interactive. Along the same lines, I directed earlier in September for all staff to attend active shooter training, and that last session was today. Almost all staff was able to participate in that. On the, more on the good news side, the theater is currently under construction, and on Tuesday, I think they poured about a hundred yards of concrete. So that's really exciting. They got their footing set up, and they're, and they're now, you know, working on the, on the actual construction of the renovation of the theater. And then finally, just an update on SCORE, alluded to by Councilmember Back. So, the SCORE process is problematic on a couple of levels. Great facility, and we're working to find ways to kind of make SCORE more sustainable. So there's two events that are happening sort of simultaneously. One is that Federal Way has indicated their intention to leave SCORE. So that means that instead of seven cities participating, and a fairly large one at that, now we're down to six cities. So, the, the task, there's a, a special task force that's been set up that involves, I think Councilmember Back will be coming to that. I know that Chief Thomas has been involved. I know that Beth Ann from the finance side has been involved. I know Tim has been involved, and Dan has also been helping as we go forward with that. That's sort of our team. To look at ways to participate with SCORE where there are more, there's more balance between, I think, what the cost structure is and what the revenue structure is, and that's critical that those get lined up. So they're looking at a lot of ways to try and kind of create more balance in the costs and in cost to us, and then what the, what the revenue brought in is. So that's, and also, there's a new executive director, Devon Schrum, and I think she's been very helpful in trying to create the atmosphere that we can move forward and find solutions, so we're encouraged by that. But it is challenging, and I think that's going to do it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. At this point, the council is going to take a ten-minute recess. It is not an executive session. It is merely a council break and one for the audience as well. We will be back in ten minutes.
Okay, I'll bring us back and we will start with the consent agenda. Will the clerk please read the consent calendar?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, childhood cancer awareness month. Item four, arts commission appointment. Item five, city manager's step increase. Item six, transportation gateway project, South 216th Street, Segment Three. Improvements right-of-way acquisition. Item seven, surplus property vehicles. Item eight, acceptance of the City of Des Moines Human Services Department Aging and Disability Services Division ADS grant. And item nine, 2019 vehicle purchase, and that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Banks. At this time, I'm going to let the council know that I intend to pull item five. And I want to ask the council if there's any other, if anyone else has an item to pull. Okay. So what that means, counsel, is that when I call for the vote, we will be voting on everything except for item five. And I'll bring that back for discussion. So all those in favor of the consent agenda as read minus item five, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes seven zero. And we had a proclamation in that, and I'll read into the record before we address other business. The proclamation reads, "Whereas each year, the United States, in the United States, more than fifteen thousand children from birth to nineteen years of age are diagnosed with cancer, equal to about forty-two childhood cancer diagnoses every day. And whereas each year worldwide, there are more than three hundred thousand new childhood cancer diagnoses, equal to about a child being diagnosed with cancer every three minutes. And whereas although the five-year survival rate for childhood cancers has reached eighty percent, nearly two thousand American children under the age of nineteen will die each year from cancer, making it the leading killer of children by disease. And whereas those that do survive will face at least one chronic health condition later on in life, not limited but including heart, liver, lung damage, infertility, secondary cancers, and growth deficits. And whereas the cause of childhood cancer are largely unknown, and more studies are needed to understand which treatment works best for children, and whereas cancer treatment for children often must differ from traditional and adult treatments to take into account children's developmental needs and other factors. And whereas children, including Leila Beckstrand, are among the hundreds of children that are being treated for cancer in Washington State, and whereas Washington is a caring state and community that supports children and families, now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims the month of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Signed, this twenty-seventh day of September, 2018." I pulled item five because I feel it's important that we have a conversation about it. The item has to do with the city manager's stepping increase. And I would like to share some thoughts on this before we bring it back up for a vote. And I will also provide the council with the rest, but I have prepared some key thoughts that I think are very important. I guess the key thing is to flesh this out a little bit more for the community. When Michael was first appointed as acting city manager, the city was facing bankruptcy in 2017. After addressing things with the council in a number of key issues, two years later, we are solvent and sustainable. Michael's contribution to this effort came through his leadership and knowledge of finance and public policy. The state auditor has also raised a red flag on the city because we had a fund balance of about $700,000. That fund balance was brought to my attention the night that I became mayor for the first time and Deputy Mayor Pennington became deputy mayor. We had many tough decisions to make at the council, but we did it, and with Michael's leadership, we now have a fund balance of over $5 million, and we are sustainable and going forward and no longer in threat of bankruptcy.
Yeah.
Additionally, Michael's worked with the Finance Department to request a new bond rating. We had previously received a rating of A1. After a visit to the city by Standard and Poor's analysts and a comprehensive review of our finances and future projections, S&amp;P, Standard and Poor's, upgraded our bond rating by three steps to a double A-plus. This saved the city when we did our recent bond issue over half a million dollars. Michael's also assembled, in my opinion, an amazing leadership team, and it includes the following positions, and he did this to address both attrition and bring on necessary new talent. That team consists of, he created new positions of the Chief Operations Officer and Chief Strategic Officer, the Director of Emergency Management, and we have a Communications Director. He hired a new Finance Director and Human Resources Director and a new Police Chief. He has reappointed our Municipal Judge, who has been very innovative, that's why we have a DUI court, and he has promoted our City Attorney and our Acting Harbor Master. He really has established great partnerships within this community. One I'd like to cite specifically is with Wesley, as it has helped maintain, not only maintain our senior services program, but we have the opportunity to grow it far beyond the capacity that we ever had before. Michael also recently, as noted earlier, directed our entire staff to have active shooter training. It shows he cares about this team and he cares about that the city can continue to function well. He is also an advocate for emergency management. He has also, because of the, I'm assuming that because of the condition of the city for so many years, there were many people who didn't have professional development, but with that development could really flourish and do an excellent job. Michael has invested in that, and these leaders are coming forward, and they are performing in amazing ways. I don't really care for the word amazing, but I got to tell you, it really fits here. He's driven our economic development process that has resulted in the expansion of our business park, and that brought in bartels and outdoor?
Outdoor research.
Outdoor research. So our business park started out at a particular size, and it's now grown, and the input and the income from that business center is why we are stable. And it's not the only reason, but it is one of them. Businesses are now opening downtown. We used to hear about vacancies. We don't have as many vacancies. We do have issues with quality real estate, and that does lead to some challenges for certain types of businesses, but other businesses are coming in. People are investing in the real estate down there, and we are redeveloping. One site in particular I will cite is Kitty Corner from Wally's. It was known as the BB Nails. Coming Soon was on the building for over fifteen years. But now it is happening. The bulldozers are here. A former council member and Mayor Dave Kaplan once said, "I get excited when the bulldozers show up." Well, I got to tell you, I'm excited. And we have new restaurants, and they've expanded into lunchtime service because more people are here during that time that make it worthwhile. We now have more places serving breakfast on the weekends than we've had in the past. And our theater, that everybody wants to see, you know, come into this whole vision that is in the center of our town, just poured a hundred yards of concrete in their footing, and they are moving forward. It's been a challenge to some people because what you can't see is what they're doing because they're working from the backside of the building. But it's going forward, and along with that, we are having conversations with Puget Sound Energy to underground the utilities back there and make that a walking alley, a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree retail area. And that's huge. Michael's also worked successfully with the Port of Seattle to receive over $60,000 in grants that allows us to engage consultants that have helped us define options for the Marina redevelopment. We saw, we had a first look at those options, and we are moving forward. This is really going to happen. And at the same time, though, we're not just moving forward and saying, "This is what's going to happen." It is going to happen, but we're working with the boating community. We're listening to them because we're going to do it together. We're also listening to the greater community because we're going to do this together, but we're going to have that town instead of the town of potential. We will be the town of realized potential. And a lot of that has to do with the work that this man is doing with the team and the council. Michael's efforts with state legislators have resulted in a $2 million allocation for the bulkhead replacement project that is down at our Marina and is now in design. We can't do a Marina redesign if you don't get those bulkheads shored up, and we all know that if those bulkheads fail, it may be difficult to replace. And we may lose a lot of that amenity that we've had for so long because of the environmental protections that are out there today and so forth. Michael's also worked closely with our Police Department. As a city manager, he has done ride-alongs with, I know, at least every shift, if not every officer, to understand what the issues are in our city so we can truly affect and effectively address them. He also listens to their issues and their challenges, and we have a healthier Police Department than we have had in probably at least over a decade, if not longer. He is the city's representative to score, as he talked about, and he's holding them to the same fiscal accountability that we're holding ourselves to, and it needs to be that way. He's engaged with aviation matters. As you heard tonight, he works with our Aviation Advisory Committee. He chairs it. He represents the city on the C-TAC Stakeholder Roundtable Committee. He participates on the Technical Advisory Committee of the Ultrafine Particle Study at the University of Washington, and he does so at the request of Representative Tina Orwell. He's on the Steering Committee for the Budget Proviso Airport Base Line Impact Study, and he's expanded, and additionally, he's expanded our parks by facilitating the recent purchase of the Van Gasken Overlook Property in partnership with Forterra. He attends the Mayor's Roundtable with me and the Highline Forum, and we do it to make sure that we are, that everybody understands what we're doing, we're listening, and we are partnering with our surrounding cities where we possibly can. I also want to say that on a professional level, Michael has recently received his master's degree from Oxford University in Sustainable Urban Development. However, this is the recent achievement. Prior to that, he had a master's from Cambridge University in International Relations and a master's in Economics from the University of California in Santa Cruz. He did his undergraduate work in honors political science at the University of California in Santa Barbara as well. He's also been recognized for his work as a Robert F. Kennedy Fellow, and that work was with low-income communities on public health care and public education. He's got a long list of professional experience, both in the public and private sectors. He's got over twenty-two years in municipal government law. We're very fortunate to have someone with such an extensive resume, and not only the smarts to attain it, but the understanding of how to apply it. This adjustment brings Michael's compensation closer to being in line with his peers in other cities like C-TAC, and it's commensurate with his education, his experience, and his contributions to the City of Des Moines. I realize it is unusual that the city council would make a movement like this in a midterm. But if you don't take care of the staff that you have that is working really well, they will be someplace else. Now, Michael has not only shown his commitment to the city, he's even purchased real estate here. He's chosen to live with us and accept the implications of everything we do here. That's outstanding. And for those reasons, I know I've been long-winded, but for those reasons, I think this is absolutely appropriate, and I am in full support of it. Firsthand I saw was Councilmember Banks.
So we've had many long discussions in our executive sessions around Michael, and when we hired him, we had huge discussions around that. I believe that we vetted all of the necessary information, all of the necessary work that Michael's done. We've seen in staff a huge change, this huge wave of, to me, more excitement than we've seen in, well, I've been on council three years, but I used to sit in the audience, so you could see it in the audience as well. But you can see the involvement now. You can see staff really getting, you know, their hands dirty and getting stuff done, whereas before, you got your hands dirty and that was about it because we didn't have money to move forward. I think when you look at, especially what you just said, Mayor, if you don't take care of your people, you will lose your people. And we've got some really good people here, so obviously you came from other cities and they lost you. So we appreciate you coming here because the leadership that Michael shows and demonstrates, to me, says volumes when he's able to get the kind of staff that he's got now. And we've had staff here for a long time that have done excellent work, but no recognition for that. There was no, to me, there was no real value shown to that staff, and now there's a lot of value. And I think it's just demonstrated when you walk into City Hall now. So for me, it was really about what the energy level was because it was terrible before. And I'm not blaming anyone either. I'm just saying it was terrible because there was a lot of financial issues, and we don't have those financial issues, and we keep that at the forefront, though. We'll never forget that we had financial issues, and we'll never have them, well, knock on wood somewhere. Hopefully, we'll never have those again because we're doing the right thing with Michael through his staff, and I have to say, I'm extremely proud of where we are today, and I'm extremely proud to be on this City Council. I just came from Flint, Michigan, and let me tell you something. You want to talk about some really dire stuff going on there?
Yeah.
I had an opportunity to talk to a lot of the citizens, and their City Council is chaos. So when I started talking about ours, they were like, "Oh, well, let me write that down. Let me write that." Just the ability to be able to work together as a team, and we've been able to do that now for quite a while, but now with our two new council members, there's even more synergy. And that's what's really important. You keep it, you don't worry about what's going on, well, you do, but on the other hand, you figure out a way to get through things. And I have to say that I think this is one of the better city councils I've seen, and then, of course, serving on it, and then going around the country, talking to other people. They don't really know what needs to occur in terms of working together, and you can agree to disagree, but you've got to move forward. So thank you, Michael. Thank you, staff.
The next hand I saw was Councilmember Beck, and then I believe Deputy Mayor Pennington, and then Council-
If you can just come down the dais, then that's fine.
Going by hand, sorry.
Okay, yeah, I'll go after Beck.
Oh, you want me just to go straight? Okay.
Whatever you want to do. You're the leader.
We can agree to disagree.
I'm going to stick to protocol and follow the hands, so it will go, okay.
Either way, we're going to be dishing a lot of compliments on Michael, so.
Well, you've got the floor right now, my friend.
Okay, so I couldn't support this pay grade increase anymore, and what he's getting, this has already been mentioned, but it is very comparable with other cities this size and even larger. But when I look at the education, the experience, and the wealth of knowledge that Michael is bringing, we're getting way more than what I've seen in other people that hold that same title, so I think we are really fortunate. Louisa just mentioned, I mean, there's a lot of other cities that are very dysfunctional, and I've got friends that are in some of these cities, and they see the infighting, and a house divided against itself will not stand. And this house is standing, and I attribute so much of that to our City Manager, Michael Mathias, because he's a team player, and you can see it with his executive staff and directors who work here. There's an enthusiasm about working in the City of Des Moines, and we're all in this together. We're not trying to outdo somebody else. It's like, when one succeeds, the team succeeds. So, Michael, you're just doing an incredible job. And the thing I want to compliment you most on is your attitude, and attitude gets tested when things are tough. And so I remember the night I got sworn in is when I found out our former City Manager was going to retire, so we immediately went into a recruiting process, and you won a position, and you qualified for the position, but we went through the vetting process of going through other candidates, and as it turned out, you weren't actually our first choice. And I remember, I was concerned because your Assistant City Manager was your title and Economic Development person, and I didn't want to lose you, but it's like, boy, if you didn't get the promotion you wanted, it would stand to reason why you would want to get your resume out and start looking elsewhere. But I remember watching you for that roughly one week period, and your attitude didn't waver. You didn't criticize council members. You were disappointed. I would have been too, but your attitude was exceptional. And so when our choice number one all of a sudden backed out, it was just a no-brainer that we need to choose Michael. And, man, I am just so impressed with the work you've done and the teamwork mentality, and it's fun to serve on this council in a functional, healthy city with somebody like you at the helm, so good job. We are really, really fortunate to have you, and that's all I've got to say.
Did you guys toss a coin down there, or what you going to do? Okay, Councilmember Hone.
We agree really easily. Michael, I just want to say thank you. Oftentimes, I come to check my box on a Sunday night or a Friday night or Sunday afternoon, and you're here, and one of my pleasures is kind of scaring the hell out of you.
Active shooter.
But it just shows that you're committed 24/7 to this city. I know I'm just one of seven council members, but I contact you, we'll just say frankly, at all hours of the day, and you respond. And it's all about these issues of the city, and I, people just don't understand or see that piece. I also, due to the committees I am, I get to go around and meet other city managers and even strong mayors, and I'm going to tell you, folks, we got one of the best, hands down, and we want to keep that. Just the half a million dollars you saved us on the bond rating, right? Well, that'll pay for the increase, which is four percent, by the way, for the next seventy-one years, so we don't plan you going anywhere. I had to do it on my calculator, so I had that fun fact. But most importantly, and this is the one I want everybody to hear, this council is really big on Des Moines' future, and we know that Michael's one of the horses we need to ride to get there. This is an investment in the future, in my opinion, and that was one, that's probably my sole reason why I support this more than any other. So thank you. Looking forward to the ride together.
Deputy Mayor Pennington? Then I'll go to Councilmember Nutting and Councilmember Beck.
So, you know, everything's been said about Michael, so I'm going to talk about Bonnie, but, no. You know, when I look back at what you folks wanted in your city, and you wanted a stronger police department, you wanted a Parks and Recreation Program that was sustainable and to maintain, and a seniors program to be sustained at the level or greater than what it was. You wanted roads and sidewalks. You wanted a whole host of quality-of-life things, and those things all, they all cost money. They all, if we want them, we have to pay for them. And as a council, we were looking at things, how to do this. We want economic development. We want sustained revenue streams. We want quality of life. We want to take on an airport, but we want to do it wisely and smartly, and we want to do it based in fact and science. And at the same time, we want to look at our Marina and our downtown, and we want to develop that, and we needed help paying for it. And the folks that are paying for it are the same people that we're going toe-to-toe with, the Port of Seattle. And that's because of the relationships that he's formed, that you can have that disagreement or a difference of opinion, yet over here, you can still work together. And so, and I'll speak a little bit to what Councilmember Beck said about the selection The guy that everybody except two council members were real high on, myself and the mayor, he didn't give us the courtesy of even a goodbye, but what he wanted was $190,000 within the first six months. And he started his career in government in the state of Washington, and he wanted to make, he wanted us to make, and then left to go work around the country, and then wanted to come here to finish it out. And he wanted us to pay his portion of his pension, state pension, at a quarter of a million dollars. We hired Michael at a substandard rate because there were members that weren't quite sure what he was capable of doing. And I think if you look at what we have, what you saw, what you heard from the mayor today and the other council members, there should be absolutely no doubt in anybody's mind, his value and what he's done for the city and working with all of his employees, bringing them together, and it is really something to watch. And somebody, I mean, he couldn't do it alone, but he has to be the director of that choir, and you've got to be that orchestra. You've got to be on cue, and you've got to play the right notes, and he's doing it, and so are all of you. And we have a stronger police department. We have a sustainable Parks and Seniors Program. We, I can tell you firsthand, we have a roadway that is under construction. First time in over a decade. We have economic development. We have a sustained revenue stream. We have quality-of-life programs. We are, as you witnessed tonight with his report, taking the lead on a lot of different levels with the airport. And I know, I know the late nights because I know the late-night conversations with Michael and the mayor and myself, and I know the pressure that he was under to try to make this right. And I tell you, my biggest concern was that we would lose him in the middle of this because the folks that come to him, that ask for his advice and his opinion, he knows a hell of a lot more about a lot of these subjects on a regional and national level than the folks that we're standing up against. And when you have, you know, people out of the state that come down and say, "How do you do this?" Or "What's the deal with this?" Or "I don't understand this," and you have to explain that to them. I mean, we have an individual here that really is second to none, and I am proud to have supported him all the way through. I'm proud to support him in the future, and I'm proud of this council of recognizing that and recognizing him and recognizing all of our folks in this city. And this is, I mean, this is a way to recognize you, and it's a way to say thank you, and it's well-deserved, well-earned. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting?
Well, you all know I'm a man of very few words, so I just got to say, there's not much left to say except for thank you for righting the ship. We're on the path that we need to be. You've done a-
You've done a great job. Well-deserved. Thank you.
Councilmember Buxton.
I heartily agree with everything that's been said. If I could have written a list and thought about it for two days, everybody said everything. Except one thing I thought of. Michael's a good man. And I'm, I don't feel, it's my privilege to share his story, but I watch him with his son. And he has come along with us in different events and outings. And the qualities that he carries with him as a father and that the core values come in, come with him. The, all the qualities that he carries with him as a good man, he's brought into this position. And I recognize that and I'm thankful for that, on top of all of the rest of this. So, Michael, thank you.
With that, I will make a motion to approve the pay range increase for the city manager from M 43E to M 45. Second. Effective October 1st, 2018. We have a second from Deputy Mayor Pennington. Any discussion?
Michael's lying.
That was not a discussion.
Ginger ale for Tracy.
That's on the record. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to new business. We are looking at draft ordinance 18-104, general fund ending balance policy. And we have our finance director giving us a presentation. Beth Anroth.
Hi. Councilmembers, mayor, staff, good evening. For your consideration tonight as a draft ordinance, to amend our city policy that sets the minimum general fund unrestricted fund balance. Currently, we have it set at 12%. And we're recommending that it be changed to the GFOA's recommended 16.67%. I know we have talked about, sorry.
When, when you're talking to the general public as well, the acronym, would you please, because some people don't know what it is.
I know. We kind of get the...
I'm sorry, but thank you.
Okay. The general, or the Government Finance Office Association is kind of our standard nationwide. And they set kind of a minimum policy of two months of regular reoccurring operating expenses that they recommend that we hold. And some of the reasons for setting that minimum fund balance policy is to provide cash flow to meet our operating needs, to provide the flexibility to respond to unexpected issues, and to afford a buffer against financial challenges and other forms of risk. And so, as we, in the budget retreat, looked at our financial situation and kind of you guys have talked about tonight, going from where we were not financially feasible, writing the, writing, or our course correction and making sure we're sustainable out into the future. Part of that is having those reserves set aside that we can adjust to the challenges. And so, that's why we're making the recommendation to increase that minimum.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to suspend council rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance 18-104 on the first reading.
Second. I don't know who said that. You guys, you almost pulled out of harmony. Okay, it was made by, motion made by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Back. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve draft ordinance number 18-104 relating to revenue and finance amending and repealing sections of the Des Moines Municipal Code to update the general fund ending balance policy.
Second.
You hesitated.
Motion was made by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Bangs-Buxton. Until we get a camera in here and can do photo finish, I'm not sure this is going to work. So, anyway, any discussion? Oh, we have a discussion. I'll start with Councilmember Nutting and go to Councilmember Back.
I just want to say that we wouldn't be here today updating our code to allow for more ending fund, end, ending fund balance. When I got on council, we'd be up here asking for lower ending fund balance. So, this is, this is great. It's a new day. Thank you.
I just think this is financially responsible. We've got a cushion, and we are using that to just hedge ourselves just in case. I echo what Louisa said earlier. Let's hope there's not going to be another downturn. But history shows there's ebbs and flows with economies. And so, this is just a, a smart move to keep us prepared in case hard times come. And they, they may very well come. So, I totally support this.
Anyone else?
I would like to make one, one comment. For anybody who's studied economics, it's not just where we are today because it's the same old income streams and we're just managing them well. No. We have applied a diversity of income stream principle that helps to shore things up when the weather gets rough. Because everybody who's ever paid attention to the economic cycles, and I don't know how you couldn't, because it affects all of us, you have to diversify your income. If you're betting on just one thing, you're going to lose. At some point, you're going to lose. So, that's the other thing behind the successes that are happening in the city, is we are building on multiple fronts, securing income on multiple fronts. And I think it's, you know, it's, it's in a good, we're in a good place to be able to raise this to the national standard. And it, it also shows fiscal responsibility. We should, these are things that we need to do. Michael, you had to comment?
Yeah, just two things quickly. So, when we were talking with Standard and Poor's, their, their goal for contingency funding is 15%. And the other thing is that, aside from the general fund contingency, which you're addressing right now, we also established a development fund where we took $1.5 million out of the general fund to use for rainy day fund for development. As development slows down, typically what happens is you have to start laying off people. And for that reason, usually government's late when there's an upturn because now you've got to go back, hire them back. So, the strategy was to do something to sort of smooth that. And now, that fund, based on the development, the city is at $5.2 million. So, that's separate from the general fund, um, fund balance.
Any other comments? Okay, mic's on. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Beth An. This takes us forward to a public hearing on draft ordinance number 18-101 related to the landmark on the sound zoning reclassification. At this point, Councilmember Nutting, you want to state your reasons for recusing yourself?
I have to recuse myself for being a free and accepted Mason of Washington. So, I will be leaving the council chambers now.
Thank you for recognizing that conflict of interest and ahead of time. We appreciate that. Shows great amount of integrity. So, our presentation will be given to us by our chief strategic officer, Susan Cesar. And I will now open the public hearing.
Good evening, mayor, city council. As stated, Susan Cesar, the city's chief strategic officer. The purpose tonight is an application specifically for a rezone. The rezone requested is from the current zoning of RM 900B, which is a residential multifamily zone, to IC or institutional campus zone. And this is for the landmark on the sound property. And the applicants are Jackson Maine Architecture, Urban Workshops, and the Grand Lodge of Free and Accepted Masons. So, the process for decision for this is that the council will hold this public hearing, which is a quasi judicial process, and make a determination about whether the rezone, proposed rezone complies with the decision criteria that are set forth in the Des Moines Municipal Code. If the application complies with the criteria, the council should approve the application. Little bit about what is a quasi judicial public process. It's a little different than the normal proceeding that the council often has, which are policy decisions. This is a process that is governed by the same appearance of fairness rules that apply to cases in court. What that, what that is about is that the decision-makers conduct a hearing that is fair and unbiased in both appearance and in fact. The city council, under this process, is required to objectively determine the facts from the information that's presented in the hearing and including the council packet that was available online and in the council's boxes, and draw conclusions from these materials to provide the basis of an official decision. Once an application is submitted, in this case, it came in on May 23rd, 2018, no member of the decision-making body, which is the council, may engage in ex-party or other communications outside of the hearing process with either proponents or opponents unless the member places on the record the substance of the communication and provides a public announcement of the content of the communication and allows for the party's right to rebut the substance or to refute the information. The decision criteria for this application are set forth on this slide. I'm going to just go through them very quickly because we'll go through them in more detail individually later in the presentation. And these are adopted in the code of, for a, specific for a rezone application. So, the first one is that the requested amendment would meet the concurrency requirements. And this is a provision of state law that talks about provision of public services and facilities to serve development. Secondly, that the amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. The third one is that there's a substantial relation to the public health, safety, and welfare. Additionally, that the amendment is warranted to either achieve consistency with the comprehensive plan because of a need for additional property in the proposed zoning district or because the proposed zoning classification is appropriate for reasonable development of the property. The fifth one, the property in question is adjacent and contiguous to property of the same or higher zoning classification. That kind of avoids what we call spot zoning. The amendment will not be material detrimental to uses or property in the immediate vicinity. And the amendment has merit and value for the community as a whole. So, what is this application? This is specifically to change the zoning for the landmark of the sound property from that existing residential multifamily to an institutional campus zone. I'm kind of, to set the background, the city council previously considered for this property, what is the appropriate land use designation when they adopted the comprehensive plan and designated this property for institutional campus? And this proposed rezone will simply bring that zoning into compliance with the already adopted city's comprehensive plan. What the hearing is not, it's not related to a specific development proposal that is for future consideration. Those future proposals will be individually reviewed for compliance with all the city's standards. And specifically in the institutional campus zone, there'll be a master plan that is submitted. And to that master plan will apply all the city's regulations, zoning, traffic, stormwater. We'll do a environmental review under the State Environmental Policy Act and impose mitigation for any project-specific impacts that are identified. This, the master plan also provides an opportunity for public comment and also for an appeal. There'll be another public hearing, and the city council will review and approve the master plan. For this specific application, we received it May 23rd. Notice was mailed to surrounding property owners and residents to allow for public comment on the application. And then in August, we, we completed the environmental review and issued a threshold determination, which also allowed for additional public comments. We received a few comments, not a lot, I would say a handful. And there's a summary in the packet. Primarily, we received phone calls inquiring what this was about as the sign was posted on the property and people got notices in the mail. Comment and appeal periods have now lapsed for the threshold determination, and there was no appeal filed on the SEPA or environmental review process. This just gives you a shot of what the current zoning is, so I can point it out. Here's the landmark property, and that's the RM 900B zoning. This is the city's adopted comprehensive plan, and it shows this property for future institutional campus zoning. And indeed, that is what the request would be, to change the current RM 900B zoning, which is inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan, to be consistent with the adopted comprehensive Again, these are the decision criteria that we'll be going through next. And this is through the staff review. We've taken a look at each of the criteria in the code. And the first one, that relates to concurrency requirements that are set forth in state law. There's a requirement that we, we, as the jurisdiction reviewing an application, take a look at the need for public services. And, and, and we've taken a look at that. This is just the zoning change. So, in effect, that, that is a future determination that will happen as additional. And when a future development is, is submitted, we will do what's called a concurrency review. We'll look at stormwater provision. We'll look at traffic impacts and any needed mitigation. And that will happen at each future phase of the development. And the staff did not identify any concurrency issues with the application. The second criteria is that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And this, in fact, it is. As we've seen, is that the comprehensive plan is already, decision was made by the city council that the preferred land use for the property is institutional campus zoning. Also, that the amendment bears a substantial relation to the public health, safety, and welfare. The rezone of the property does bear that relationship as it's, it's consistent with the vision that is expressed in the adopted comprehensive plan for the property. And again, we will take a close look at future development to be reviewed for consistency with all the city's development standards, both of general parking, traffic, stormwater, and also specifically with IC zone requirements. The amendment is warranted in order to achieve consistency or because of a need for additional property. And as we've stated before, it is indeed consistent with the city's adopted comprehensive plan. And the fifth one, the property is adjacent and contiguous to property of the same or higher zoning classification. The property is directly adjacent to Judson Park property to the north, and that is currently zoned institutional campus. And that the amendment will not be material detrimental to uses or property in the immediate vicinity. And again, future, this is just the rezone. The future development applications will be carefully reviewed for compliance with all of the development standards. And we will impose additional mitigation at the time. For instance, there may be road improvements required as phases of the, of a future development were to come in. And the city council will need to approve a master plan for the site that is determined at that time to be in compliance with the city's regulations. And seventh, that the amendment has merit and value for the community as a whole. And... And seventh, that the amendment has merit and value for the community as a whole. And this institutional campus zone has, as one of its purpose, the appropriate, to encourage the appropriate reuse of surplus institutional buildings and avoiding long-term vacancies. And in fact, this zoning change will encourage that. This in turn will also further the economic vision of the city, promoting development in a manner that strengthens community, sustainability, livability, business vitality, employment, and housing capacity. Additionally, having an active use of the site rather than a vacant building can also help to, with crime prevention that can be attracted to vacancies. The staff will have, has a recommendation after review. We recommend that the council find the requested rezone meets the decision criteria. And if the council determines that these criteria are met, then the council, then the application should be approved. And that, I will go ahead and leave the motions up for, at the conclusion of your public And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. The following are the rules of order for conducting tonight's hearing, which is quasi judicial. All council members should give the consideration as to whether or not they have, one, demonstrated bias or prejudice for or against any party to the proceedings, a direct or indirect monetary interest in the outcome of the proceedings, a prejudgment of the issue prior to hearing the facts on record, and again, ex parte contact with any individual excluding the administrative staff with regard to the issues prior to the hearing. If any council member should answer in the affirmative, then the council member should state the reason for their answer at this time. So I may inquire of the administration as to whether or not a violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine does exist. Does any council member answer yes to any of those questions? Okay. Seeing no one come forward then, it is now time for the public comment portion of the All comments by proponents, opponents, or the public should be made from the podium, and any individual making comments shall first give their name and the city in which they reside. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. It's not necessary to be a proponent or opponent in order to speak. If you consider yourself neither a proponent nor opponent, please speak during the proponent portion and identify yourself as neither a proponent or opponent. No comments shall be made from any other location, and anyone making out of order comments shall be subject to removal from the meeting. There will be no demonstrations during or at the conclusion of anyone's presentation. So may I please have those who have signed up, and I will call your name, stand and raise your hand to consider the following question, and your response will be, I do. Apologize. Chris Haynes, Clint Brown, Ruben Schutz, and Harry Steinmetz. Do you affirm, under penalty of perjury under the laws of the state of Washington, that the testimony you are about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge? I see you all have confirmed. Okay, is there anyone else who, I'm sorry, that'll take us, I will start calling first person up. Skip process, forgive me. First person to speak is Mr. Chris Hayes. Is it Haynes? It's Haynes. Haynes, I'm sorry, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Haynes. I live in Seattle, Washington, and I'm a representative of the Grand Lodge of Free and Accepted Masons of Washington, who owns the property in question. We are a proponent of this rezone change. We're excited that this is an important step in helping us integrate the property into the community and help support the vision of the future of Des Moines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Clint Brown. I am the grand secretary for the Freemasons of Washington, and we are proponents for this rezoning change. And thank you very much for allowing us to be heard tonight. Freemasonry has a long history in Washington. Freemasonry has a long history in this community. The building that we are discussing tonight, the landmark on the sound, was built in the 1920s and has been a landmark, literally, in this community for a long time. We advocate for this change, because we would like to see this building continue to be a landmark in this community for many years to come, because it is a cornerstone of our community. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Ruben Schutz.
Thank you. My name is Ruben Schutz. I've traveled from the city of Tacoma to be here. This is my first council meeting in Des Moines, and it's been an enjoyable process so far, so. I am here representing Judson Park, the owners of Judson Park. They were referenced in the slides. For those who don't know, it's a 270-unit retirement living facility that is directly adjacent to the landmark property and has been part of this community for many years. I should have mentioned, I'm not here really as a proponent or opponent, but I just had a couple of comments that I'd like to say. First, the owners of Judson Park are excited about a new phase in the life of the landmark building. And they're looking forward to being good neighbors next to and with regard to future development at the site. I understand that today, this decision is with regard to a non-project action and is just, affects the zoning designation, so that, from the multifamily to the IC institutional campus. So given that, I understand IC requires a master plan, that was discussed. The owners of Judson Park will have more input at that time with regard to impacts with regard to the proposed master plan. So I won't have anything more to say at this juncture, but I just wanted to come introduce, say these statements, and put that on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Harry Steinmetz.
Hello, I'm Harry Steinmetz. I'm a resident of Des Moines, and I am a proponent of this particular zoning change. As many of you know, I used to represent Judson Park and the Masons, as well as Wesley, in the state legislature as their government, director of government relations for the Washington Association of Housing and Services for the Aging. And believe me, that's a mouthful to introduce yourself. It was well-known within that organization that the landmark was not sustainable over the long run as a retirement community. There were several proposals, including trying to do a joint function with Judson Park to build a nursing home, and I was deep in the certificate of need process, which is a federal approval of that, that just simply wasn't allowed to happen. I think that it's a real head-scratcher to me to find out that Judson Park and the Masonic are not in the same zoning. They should be. They were originally very similar institutions, and that putting them in the same zoning just makes sense. So I'm not sure what the history of that is, but for some reason, the landmark on the sound was left out of that. I think that putting them into the same zoning and making it consistent with our comprehensive plan is a great idea. It's been a long time coming, and I think that will facilitate some development on that land that we all hope is going to be a very positive development. I think there have been a number of ideas floated out there. Certainly, it's been, at least thus far, a very open process. I think a lot of people know what is being suggested at this point, and I don't want to use a more formal term, but suggested for this property. And that's kind of zoning change will help facilitate that happen. Remember, there are things coming down the road, and I think that's good. I like the, that you have mentioned the parking and the stormwater and all of that, because it's going to have an impact on the neighborhood. But this is something that needs to happen if we're going to keep this really, really beautiful building in our community and a significant mark in our community. So please do pass this.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who wished to speak on this issue that did not get a chance to sign up. Before you come to the podium, I need you, well, actually, I will ask you to come to the podium, because I need you to take the oath before. Do you affirm, under penalty of perjury under the laws of the state of Washington, that the testimony you are about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and the city in which you live, and then begin your comment.
My name is Travis Samichi, from the city of Samamish. I'm a partner with Urban Development and Construction. We're the potential buyers of the landmark site. I'm here to show my support for the rezone of the site. The rezone of the existing property will allow the building to be repurposed and will revitalize an iconic feature in the city of Des Moines for the community to enjoy and benefit from. Thank you, council members, for recognizing and supporting the vision for the people of Des Moines. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this issue that did not get a chance to sign up? Second call, is there anyone else who wishes to speak that did not get a chance to sign up? Third and final call, is there anyone else who wishes to address this issue that did not get a chance to sign up? Okay, seeing no one approach, I will now inquire of the administration as to whether or not there have been any misstatements of fact, or whether the administration wishes to introduce any material as to subjects raised by proponents or opponents, or alter in any regard its initial recommendations.
Mayor, there were no corrections to be made, and the staff recommendation is as noted in the presentation.
Thank you. Counsel, we were at the part where it is questions only. So counsel, do we have questions? I see, I've got Councilmember Bangs, Councilmember Back. Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Bangs, and then go to Councilmember Back.
So, excuse me, Susan, I see that there were two people, or I don't know, maybe same person asked two questions. And there were responses that we provided them. Was there any feedback back from those inquiries?
Yes, actually, we had one person respond back that they were very pleased with the response and thanking us very much. In fact, that's the exact, similar words, pleased with the response.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Back.
Susan, Mr. Steinmetz actually prompted a really good question. So when the IC title was created in, what was it, 2012, institutional campus, so Highline College signed up, Wesley and Judson, and, but the Masonic home was not included in that. Is that because it was empty at the time and they weren't using it, so they just didn't bother to ask for it? Or why exactly didn't that get included with the IC zoning back when Judson Park did?
Being newer here, I wasn't, you know, privy to that history, but I think city manager Mathias may have some of that history.
I'm going to call Denise.
Denise Slater, Planning and Development Services Manager. At the time, the Masons were marketing their property, and they weren't quite sure what the future would be for their property. And so they wanted to have a little bit more flexibility in thinking about whether they would want to keep it under the current zoning, or potentially have the opportunity in the future to change it to the IC zone. So they held off being included in that rezone.
Thank you.
That makes sense, thank you. No more questions.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bangs? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Bangs.
I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 18-101 on first reading.
Second. Motion was made by Councilmembers Bangs and reseconded by Councilmembers Mahoney and Pennington. You guys are, I. Oh, it was Back and? I'm going to give it to Deputy Mayor Pennington, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Councilmember Bangs.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 18-101, amending DMMC 18.10.050, adoption of official zoning map, to reclassify tax parcel 1722049023 from RM to 9-900B residential multifamily zone to IC institutional campus zone for the landmark on the sound property.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Bangs, seconded by Deputy Mayor Pennington. Any discussion?
Not yet.
Really? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of our, tonight's agenda. We are at the end of our meeting. Our next meeting will be October 4, 2018. Is there a motion to adjourn? A vote. Motion was made by Deputy Mayor Pennington.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Buxton. Discussion? Good. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Six zero, thank you.
Nice.